Merrimack TV content may no longer be available on YouTube. To continue watching our programs, please download the Merrimack TV app from your device's app store. Programs may also be available at MerrimackTV.com.
Good evening. Welcome to the Merrimack School Board July 14th, 2025 meeting. Will everyone stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance? I will leave the floor open for a few minutes for public participation. This is the time of the evening when the public can come and speak to the board. When you choose to come speak to the board, you just state your name and address and what you'd like to say. And if you're a student, you never need to say your address. So we'll wait just a few minutes in case someone comes in. All right. We'll move on to the Superintendent update.
Thank you, Lori. Well, first, we want to welcome Kathleen. Welcome, Kathleen. It's wonderful that you are joining us, and we look forward to working with you. We've already had a lot on our plates so far. You know, some people always will ask, oh, do you work during the summer? You know, to Matt or Kathleen or myself. And it's one of the busiest times during the year because we are ending one fiscal year, planning for the beginning of another fiscal year with lots and lots of activity in between, whether it's curriculum instruction related or facilities, maintenance, capital improvements. And I'm sure Matt will mention them. So it's a very busy, but it's an exciting time of year also. But we hope also that our staff, students, and families are enjoying a great summer. Hopefully, we've broken the string of, what was it, 13 consecutive rainy Saturdays and nothing but sunshine from here on out. We are planning the August retreat for the administrative team, which I'll mention a little bit later in the meeting. And I want to remind everyone who has any contacts in this profession, we are looking for a Director of Special Education. I would really like to fill that position before too long because I'm it right now, and Matt is working on more financial issues than he would care to at this point in time. And so we need a special education director. So if you know anyone, even someone from another state who is retired or someone who may be interested in working part-time on an interim basis, please call me at the office. You can access our number on our webpage. If you would prefer, I'll give you the number. It's 603-424-6200, extension 1116. That takes you to my administrative assistant, Sandy. I'd love to talk with you. Okay? So please give it some thought. You'd be working with a great team, excellent team, and an excellent school board. So nothing to lose, everything to gain. I hope you'll join us.
And if I may, Kathleen being new, right, with us, she has volunteered to walk up and down the street where the library is with a sandwich board on saying, "Special Ed Director needed, inquire."
We're probably going to need that.
Only if you bring me some water as I'm walking back and forth all day long in the heat.
I will do that. As long as you can catch on the fly.
Any comments or questions by the board? Great. Then we will let Kathleen give her first Assistant Superintendent update.
First of all, it's wonderful to be here. I am thrilled to be part of the Merrimack team. And to tag on to what Bill has said, it has been a very welcoming, helpful, wonderful eight days that I've been here, and I'm looking forward to many, many more. So come join us. There's a couple of things just that I wanted to update you on. As I said, I've only been here a couple of days, but we have had some summer programming already beginning for our students last week. That included credit recovery, transitional programming, of course, our extended school year for some students. And one of the highlights each summer, the Camp Invention, which is an enrichment program that was last week for all five days that was hosted at Mastercola Elementary School with 170-plus campers and 35 high school student volunteers, which is wonderful. These students might have previously themselves been a K6 student who then transitioned to being a 7th, 8th grade leader in training, and then now we're at the high school providing voluntary support services. They had a showcase of products on Friday afternoon where family, friends could come in and look at the different projects that the students created that year. So special thanks to Kathy Goodman and Amanda Lassard, who were the co-directors. Teachers have also been busy. There are some content area curriculum development and revision projects going on this summer in math, science, social studies, world languages, and unified arts, which include music, health, and physical education. Additionally, there's been a group that's been looking at K6 report card revisions and some competency development work. Social studies competency work and curriculum development has been happening in-house, but we've also had a group who has been partaking in some professional development today and also tomorrow with NHLI, which is the New Hampshire Learning Initiative. Those are the administration at the middle school, and then there are also some department heads and English, and English, Science, and Math teachers who are also participating in that so that they're working at the high school level on their competencies during that time. In August, we have the Torchbearer Program that are going to be coming up on the 18th and 19th of August with six dedicated wonderful professionals who will be facilitating that work. And of course, we'll be putting together our before-school professional development. That is a work in progress. The last piece that I wanted to just mention, as you might be aware, the Title Grants, I wanted to give you an update. We did receive the preliminary allocation for Title I, which is approximately 40% of what we were to anticipate for our funding this year. However, the three other title programs that we participate in, the first being Title II Part A for professional development, Title III Part A for language instruction for English learners, and Part IV, I'm sorry, Title IV Part A, which are student support and academic enrichment, those are currently on hold. So we have not received those allocations. I would hope that at some point they are freed up since that will significantly impact the beginning start to our school year and the programs that we want to put in place for our students and staff. So at this time, are there any questions that board members might have for me?
Lots. We'll just go start this way. We'll start with Rachel.
Okay. Thank you. I think I have two questions. So you said 40% allocation so far for Title I. A, how much is that? And B, are we expected to get the rest of it?
I would anticipate we'd get the rest. They asked us to be level funded, level funded this year. So based on last year's allocation of about $152,000, we have a current allocation just under $60,000, and that works out to be about 40%. We'd be anticipating the remaining 60%, typically in November, but that timing could be different. Also, I don't know if the final allocation will reflect the same as the level funding that they asked us to anticipate.
Okay. Thank you. And then for the ones that were not received, is that typical not to receive them at this time, or is this because of...
Nothing is typical of this year. Everything, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in there, but...
That's okay. And just if you can give dollar amounts of what we didn't get that we should have received at this point.
I don't have those offhand, but...
Meaning, we were asked in all the title grants to be level funded as we were planning going forward. At this point, there's just nothing in the grant management system indicating any allocation. So as they are, the federal government is working through their process, I would anticipate at some point we will get those, but I do not know any details.
If you have your Title II, Title III, Title IV, Title V, which is around 50, 60 grand every year, you're looking probably around $300,000 held back. And of course, you know, the big one is the IDEA grant. There's a million dollars there that we're stuck. Luckily, for '24, '25, we have around $500,000 left over from '24, '25, which we can carry into this year. So we're going to be pulling from that. But there's nothing coming forward, right? And so everything is just held. So IDEA with a million dollars, that's the special ed grant, and then all the other titles, probably another $300,000, I would say.
And let me add, the law didn't change. We still have to provide language services for our ESOL students. We still have to provide, we still have to have qualified teachers for that, which costs us FTE funds. We still have to fund special education programs for students. None of the law changed, but we lost the funding for now. I mean, it's all on hold, and if you're paying attention to what's happening in the media, there are people that want it to be held forever.
And it was upheld by the Supreme Court today, I think.
Naomi.
Rachel asked my first question. My second question, and this is because I've actually had multiple people, like when making conversation with me, like at social events, ask, "How does this affect our budget going into next year?" I think, Lori, you maybe just touched on that. So this is money that we're going to have to spend anyway, whether we get reimbursed for it or not, is what I'm hearing?
That's a true statement. So, you know, this year, we were impacted significantly. Next year, you know, it could be, you know, the $3.6 million we returned to reduce taxes that for some reason people didn't like. Well, it's going to cut into that by like a million, million and a half dollars if we have to provide these services without having that grant, you know? So it may turn our bottom line upside down, but it's definitely going to show a negative in special ed, definitely.
So people ask, what is an unfunded mandate? And this is what we're talking about. These are the mandate. I mean, we've given examples before, but here's a very practical example. Title II A, professional development, 3A, language instruction for non-English speaking students, and student support and academic enrichment 4A plus Title I grants. These things and IDEA, all of these, we are legally obligated and morally obligated to provide these things to students, and we are not, no longer receiving funding from the federal government to do those things. Correct?
At this point, that is correct. And the IDEA, I mean, that's back from 1978, '91, '94, 142, whatever it is. I mean, that's been a long time. It's all of a sudden shut those funds down from us and have us pick them up in the general fund with hopes of getting reimbursed at some point in time. We have to move forward as if those monies are coming.
So as people are seeing these things in the news, the connection point is this will directly impact your property taxes if something doesn't change between now and budget season.
Yes, absolutely. It will shift from the federal government to the local taxpayers.
Okay. Thank you.
And think about the districts that we've already seen in the news in the last year that did not have a fund balance of 3.6 million, that were caught short. These grants not coming in, if any district didn't anticipate and have a fund balance to reduce taxes, they're going to, I can't imagine what their school boards must be looking at right now. Lori.
I just have two things. So we know on the town side, they bring in revenue. You know, they have, you know, the dog, you register your dog, you bring in, you register your cars, they bring in a million dollars. We don't bring in money. So I would say maybe we're going to have to, when we get to the end and we think about the 3.6 million, maybe we should do, take a million and put it for unfunded mandates. You know, go to the town and say, "We'd like to take a million dollars and put it in a fund for unfunded mandates," because we get these mandates, and now it's July, and we're scared. Like, what are we going to do if this money doesn't hit us? So, you know, could we keep some of that money so we can afford...
At the end of the year, you have the option of retaining fund balance. So we will certainly make a recommendation to do that in an amount that will cover us.
Right. That's what I think we would have to do, because otherwise, you know, we can't cut anything out, so we've cut everything already.
And then if we don't use it, you know, we give it back the following year.
Exactly. Exactly.
So that's prudent.
And if I recall, it was 5% of the net that the voters approved the board to retain.
Yeah. 5% of the net assessed value, assessed assessment. So it's around $3.6 million. That's our max, but we've never gone that high. And we don't, this year coming, the ending '24, '25, we'll probably have $1.5 million.
Rachel.
And just one more question. So we talk about, you know, we receive allocations at certain intervals that we expect. If this is not happening at this point, do we have the cash flow?
Well, that's another problem, right? I'm glad you picked up on that, Rachel. That's pretty good. Yeah, right now, we're looking pretty, we're looking okay as far as the cash goes. Paul McCauley and I had a conversation because they're the ones who do the collection, and you know, they may have cash problems also. And so we've agreed, you know, I spoke with him just last week, to work with one another to avoid having to take out any tax anticipation notes. Last thing we want the town to do is do that, to do that. And we can borrow against, I think, catastrophic aid. I think there's a law, cat aid, it's called special education aid now. But yeah, we're going to work with one another to try and get through this.
There are two points that I just wanted to clarify, just so everyone understands. Title II is that one grant that is really for professional development, but that is what you want to also provide to your staff so that they are turnkeying strategies that are evidence-based, best practices for our students. So you think about the literacy program, wisdom that you heard about recently. Title II would help to provide that professional learning for the staff so that they're implementing that program. That would be a case where Title II funds would be affecting students ultimately. The other piece is that we do still currently have some remaining balances in Title II and III, because those programs are typically two-year programs. They run two years. So we do have a little bit there still. It's just that going forward, we don't have any of those allocations. I'm going to say yet. It is my hope that across the nation, all schools are in this position. At some point, some funds will filter back down to the schools, but what kind of caveats there are tied to that, we don't know yet.
Any other comments or questions? Matt?
The windows that were approved in a budget two years ago for J-muse are finally being put in this summer. I've actually seen, it took us two, two years to get these windows in, because all the construction firms and all the window people and everything like that, we called all over the place, they were busy building workforce housing, and they didn't want to mess around with a school with, you know, 10 windows for a couple hundred grand. So they're finally getting done this year. We also have the roof, the Warren article was passed this past April for MES and a little bit of J-muse for $823,000. That's signed, sealed, delivered. All the materials are here. They're moving along nicely. And we're working on, like Bill said, you know, "Don't you have the summers off because you work for a school?" I love that question, especially when I'm having dinner with my wife at a restaurant and they found out what I do for a living. Now I say to everybody, "I sell computers," or something like that. But they always, they hear school, and they figure you always have the summer off. So, you know, we're getting ready, ready for year end. It's been a very challenging year end, but we're going to, we're going to do the terrific job that the people that work in our office normally do and get that thing wrapped up and get everything done. So we're looking forward to finishing off on that one, because you can never go through too many audits in a year, and this has been the year of the audit. So that's about it.
Any comments or questions? All right. For the School Board Report, on June 19th, the Board Administration met for our annual goal-setting meeting. We had a great time of collaboration and working together, and I will just give as a preview that in September, we're going to have a comprehensive presentation on what those goals are for everyone to see and what we're working towards, but they're already in progress. We're not waiting until September to start on those. And so I just want to thank Rachel and Kathleen for both being there for the first time and participating and making it a really productive goal-setting session. Fourth of July, we had a parade here in town, and the school board had a float. I want to thank Bailey's Towing and Trucking for, once again, volunteering their flatbed. We had desks, and we had students that were there, kids and grandkids of Lori and Naomi, and we passed out tons of candy. We bought more candy this year. We passed out tons of candy. It was a gorgeous day. Could not have been better weather, not too hot, not raining, not sweltering, and just a light breeze. It was a great day. So we always have so much fun seeing all the families, and I will just add that the older teens who got candy were really appreciated because so often they get ignored as like they're adults or something. And so it's easy to recognize our secondary students, so we made sure that they got plenty of candy as well, and it was, it was a great time. So I want to thank everyone who participated with us on that. I also want to thank Heather Robitaille and Chuck Mower from our Budget Committee, who were invited as well to participate, and they helped us on July 4th. And then I want to just tag on to what Kathleen said about Camp Invention. I want to thank Kathy for personally inviting me, and her children and nephew escorted me around to see the amazing projects. The students made claw machines, you remember from like Toy Story, where you reach in to get toys out? They made Morse code communication boards, electronic boards, where they could communicate with each other with Morse code. They learned what Morse code was and how to use it. They made a penguin launcher, which was super cute. And then for my husband, who went with me, because he is an engineer and is fascinated by students learning about engineering, they made an optical design setup where they had cards, and you spun the mirror, and it looked, if you looked at the mirror, it looked like an animation of the cards that were standing up. And so, of course, he had to tell the students why that was from an optical engineering standpoint. So it was great. It was wonderful that most of the rooms had air conditioning, not all. And you could really tell the difference walking from room to room, which ones had AC that were still working on the others. I also want to thank Caitlin Bernier, who is on our Budget Committee. She was a volunteer sweltering in the recycle room. And so the students bring in all kinds of recycled goods that are used for their projects so that we're not wasting materials, and she volunteered to keep that organized and up and running all that week. So it was, it was a great time by all. And then we went out to dinner that night, hours later, and saw a whole family with four children with Camp Invention shirts on. And so before we left, I stopped to talk to them, and their kids said they had a wonderful time. So again, wonderful, wonderful opportunity for our students here in Merrimack. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. So we, we don't have any old business today, so we're going to move on to new business. And we've touched on this as far as the grants are concerned, but I think it would be beneficial to have a discussion on what the New Hampshire Supreme Court ruled the end of June. They ruled that the per pupil adequacy grant is too small, and they, they said it should be around $7,300. The disappointing part of the ruling is that two of the justices just said that the legislature needs to take this up in a timely manner, a timely manner. I would have preferred a deadline. I want to read this one portion, and I'm going to let everybody have a chance to talk. I just want to put some data out there on this. Governor Ayotte said, "The court reached the wrong decision today. The fact is, New Hampshire is in the top 10 in the country when it comes to funding our children's education. We are evaluating the ruling to determine the appropriate next steps." So on the New Hampshire Republicans' Facebook page, they used a graphic from World Population Review on per pupil spending, and New Hampshire is, two, three, four, five, six, seventh in the nation per pupil cost. As we know, though, we are 50th in the nation for the state's portion of that per pupil cost. So the governor was not completely accurate in what she said. She was accurate, but not completely accurate, because most of that money is coming from property owners in the state. But I'd like to add something that I saw in other discussions after that ruling came out. The same trope of, "Our schools are dismal, and we rank terribly," and blah, 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 blah. Using the same website, I just want to be consistent, World Population Review ranks the public schools in the nation, and New Hampshire's ranked 16th. Now, there were a number of people in the paper and on social media who were saying, "Look at Florida! Look at Idaho! They have some of the lowest per pupil costs, and they're ranked high." If you'd like to know, Idaho is ranked 47th, and Florida is ranked 41st. Now, I'm not saying that there's a cause and effect between funding and ranking, okay? But if we're going to be consistent, you can't state that we're in the top 10 for funding, but we have dismal schools. You have to use consistent data sets. Now, is Florida ranked higher in U.S. News &amp; World Report? Yes, yes, they are, but so is New Hampshire, 7th for rankings. So I think what we need to consistently say, which we have been saying as a board, is the Supreme Court's ruling is about the state's side, and the state funding, like Lori says, they have more sources of revenue that spreads the pain out across more people that lowers the burden on your lower working-class and middle-class families. The interest in dividends tax, which was eliminated, only impacts 10% of the state, and it's the 10% wealthiest part of the state. The business enterprise tax, that almost has zero impact on residents in New Hampshire, and it was reduced, 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 and practically eliminated. These are just two that we've talked about for months. Bill had some wonderful graphics several months ago on this, that would spread out the revenue burden wider and shallower so that property owners wouldn't have the deep, heavy burden cost of property taxes. With that data, I want to open up the discussion for the board on that Supreme Court ruling. Naomi.
I'm just piling on on what you said, because the one thing you didn't mention, and we had a big presentation about it during budget season, and I can't remember where we were in terms of cost of living in the nation. Do you remember the exact place we were? But New Hampshire, and New England in general, is one of the highest cost-of-living areas in the country, which means that goods and services just cost more here. And that is one reason why our spend is more. And honestly, I've seen, I'm going to just say this, because it upsets me, I've seen Governor Ayotte give that quote several times, and she says "funding" when she means "spending." She's saying the wrong word.
Yep.
May I just say, you bring up a good point, Naomi, when we talked about the fact, I think we presented some, some information that the general rate of inflation is a little bit misleading, because there is a regional, a geographic and regional component to it. And you're absolutely correct. The general rate of inflation here is certainly higher in the Northeast than it is in the remaining parts of the country. You know, that graph that Matt put together during the budget process that showed our state aid pretty much constant, you take a look at that and compare that to the indexing upward of all goods and services and commodities and labor and benefits, and it is impossible to continue at this, this current rate of funding. It is, it's bringing every school district essentially into insolvency because of the lack of funding. And, you know, nobody at the state, or very few people at the state right now, know what's actually happening and going to happen from the federal government. And they're frustrated, and we're frustrated, but people take it out locally, because nobody at the state, nobody at the federal government is really going to lend a careful ear to you. And so here's, we're the bad guys, unfortunately. And we're just trying to do the best job we can with whatever resources we're able to obtain, and something has to give. You know, look, I know this is not popular, and we'll be chastised for saying this, but if you take a look at the sales tax rates at all of the other five New England states, it averages about 6.2%. If this state even implemented a one and a half... If this state even implemented a 1.5% or 2% sales tax, you'd still have people from other states shopping in New Hampshire. It wouldn't stop them. And there'd be millions, and I know that's not a popular position. But at some point in time, you need to put some recommendations on the table for enhancing the ability of the state to provide more revenue.
In answer of your question, Naomi, so ranking the cheapest to live into the most expensive, we are 44th in the nation for cost of living. And New Hampshire Business Review said on January 6 of 2025, "To be considered middle-class a household, so it's a family, must make at least $108,470 to be middle-class in New Hampshire."
Right. So, if we were going to reasonably compare our school spend, for example, to a state like Florida, we would have to find some way to come up with a way to compare apples to apples because you can't look at the bare numbers and say, "This one is so much better" because it's not been adjusted for things like cost of living.
Lori and then Jenna.
I just want to say, you know, I think our Governor Ayotte, who is a public school graduate of Nashua, I think she got this one wrong. I think the Supreme Court was absolutely correct. And I think the state needs to increase and give us the funding to keep our schools top-rate. And I agree with Lori on the business enterprise tax, like that's one place that we did tax and we were able to give the schools and the communities money. And everyone wasn't upset by that because businesses were doing well and it was giving kind of their fair share. And now it goes back to, you know, the taxpayers and the communities. And I think, you know, people just got really nervous when their taxes keep going up and up and up. And so, when they come to vote, I don't think they're voting against us. I mean, I will say at the parade, I really loved it. It was such a warm welcoming. People were cheering for the schools. We had some signs, you know, thanking our teachers, thanking our staff. People really went above and beyond to cheer. I felt that there was a warmness in welcoming the school board and what we do. But we have to be able to fund our schools appropriately. And this not having a deadline is affecting us and we really do, I agree with Bill, we need to continue to write letters and try to find answers.
We are going to have, I'm sorry, we're going to plan for the first Legislative Breakfast sometime in early September. That will definitely be one of the agenda items.
Yeah, that'll be great.
I'm glad you said that about people supporting the schools because one of the things, this is about like voting results, one of the things that I have appreciated and noticed the last couple of years is that I definitely think that there's a balance between things that the community values and then they're just hurting because the property taxes are too high because they have past roofs, they have passed really important contracts for staff. And so, I do see that support there, but then when it comes to the budget, people are picking the lower number because they're hurting from the taxes.
Jenna?
So, first of all, I echo everything everyone else has said. And I think that where I'm at, I'm tired of repeating the same things over and over. So, I'm focused on action. What can we do? So, as we're looking at this, we're losing all this federal money we just talked about. We've lost funding due to the state-level passing universal vouchers that will come to impact us inevitably. And the New Hampshire Supreme Court has ruled, and we have to respect that ruling, that theirs is, that they're not providing enough funding. So, what can we do? What we said last year was, "It is the job of our representatives in Merrimack to go to the state and be our voices." And as taxpayers, we heard it here on the board, we heard it repeatedly throughout the budget season, that property tax, the people paying property tax are, it's too much, it's too much, right? But we here, we don't have any revenue streams to offset. All we have is what we're doing and we're trying to provide an excellent education to students. And we are not doing it with a bunch of frivolous things. It's not, we don't, you know, we don't have the fanciest schools, we don't have the fanciest anything. We have excellent curriculum, really excellent teachers that we try really hard to invest in. Of course, this loss of funding is going to make that a little harder. But people need to call their representatives, they need to ask their representatives to meet them, they need, for coffee, they need to tell their representatives face-to-face and over the phone. This is not, like, we can't continue to just complain about it. Our representatives have a job to do and they need to go to the State House next season during the budget season, and they need to figure out how to increase revenue in the state and meet their obligations. And as the people they represent, our responsibility in that is to hold them to it, to talk to them before they get there and talk to them throughout it and ask them why they're making the decisions they're doing. Look at their voting records, it's public. You can go on their websites, you can see what they vote for and then hold them accountable. And if they are not voting in our best interests, maybe we need to start changing our votes.
I want to add on to what you're saying. We cannot provide an excellent education with 30 students in a class. We cannot provide an excellent education with outdated curriculum and outdated technology. We cannot provide an excellent education with all part-time teachers who are unlicensed. By the way, I think fulfilling critical needs, that's not a bad law that God passed, but we can't do that across the board. We cannot provide an excellent education by cutting down our interventionists, our special education funding, which we can't do any way legally. We cannot provide an excellent education by allowing our buildings to become dilapidated. We cannot provide an excellent education by cutting out the resources for students to be 21st century-ready, which is not just reading, writing, and math. It's so much more than that. We cannot provide an excellent education by cutting our co-curriculars and our athletics. When I hear people say all the time, "Well, they just need to cut the budget," those are the things that get affected. We can lay off staff and have 35 kids per classroom and hit the state maximum per classroom, but guess what? Your child is not going to get differentiated education and you're probably going to have teachers leave the field.
And people already complain about behavioral issues and those only get magnified by multitudes the bigger the class gets. Because there's only one adult and 35 students with needs, that behavior spirals quickly.
And when we don't have reading and math interventionists, we have more students that fall behind and now than now, they're eligible for services that cost more money. Interventionists are to catch those students. So, I mean, beyond just having outdated textbooks, desks, and nothing else in a classroom, I mean, going back to the 1880s is not an option. And those are the kind of cuts we're talking about. To get down to a budget that can survive losing our grant money and the state not meeting its adequacy and inflation continuing to go up, inflation only goes down in terms of how much it went up. We can't fight our healthcare. We're an employer with more than 50 employees. We have to provide healthcare. We have no control over the over 10% year-over-year increase in that cost. So, where are we going to cut? And that's what I feel like when these kinds of votes are made and when the resistance to the Supreme Court, the state Supreme Court ruling is given, they're asking us to make those kinds of decisions. Because I feel it, I see how much my monthly payment to my mortgage company has gone up since I bought my house and it's all taxes and insurance. And since I've made no claims, it's not much is the insurance. I get it. And there's going to be a breaking point.
Well, and what people say is, "Well, private schools do it for so much less." Yes, private schools can choose who they accept and who they do not. They don't need to accept students with pervasive developmental and physical disabilities, who have every right to an education, both morally and legally, right? They don't have to take students that have really difficult behavioral challenges. They do not have to take students that have, you know, pervasive disabilities. They can say, "We can't provide for that," right? So, again, people are comparing us to private schools or charter schools who have the ability to turn people away. And we don't have that ability, nor would we want it, right? That we are a public school. We want the children in this town to receive an appropriate, free and appropriate public education, right? I think we all want that, truly. I think everybody in this town wants that, even the people who are complaining about their property taxes. And what I'm saying is, I feel like in this town, we've done a good job of doing what we can with what we have. And at this point, the state needs to step their responsibility up.
Well, as Matt gave us that graphic, the state hasn't even kept up with inflation. So, when you adjust for inflation, we're getting about half of what we were getting 20 years ago. So, the state, not only inadequate in their amount, they're not even adequate in keeping up with inflation.
The amount of the grant money that we get, I don't care about the statewide excess property tax, that's smoke and mirrors. That's me with a little thing playing a game like you see on a street corner, that's what that is. But the grant money is what reduces the share that people pay out of pocket to fund the schools. That has not changed in 25 years. Has the cost of health insurance and labor and utilities and maintaining buildings and inflation changed in 25 years? You darn right it did. But that, their commitment to us, has not changed in 25 years. And now, I hear that the governor has put a two-year moratorium on any building aid whatsoever. So, if you're a school district out there that needs to build a new school because of either expansion or you have a school that's currently in decay that needs to be replaced, forget about it for two years. That's a program that started 50 years ago that you could count on, and then it kind of disappeared. And now, for two years, it's totally gone.
Extra reason why we need to make sure we are constantly funding upkeep on our buildings because we cannot get in that position.
You can. Yep.
Well, and Hooks is in that position with their elementary school because their roof project got voted down and it's leaking into their gym and on their floors and they're desperate. There was a whole article on the front page of the union leader about it. We cannot get in that position. Naomi, Rachel?
So, a lot of good points have been made already. So, I'll just, like you, Jenna, for actionable things, right? You gave some really good thoughts and ideas on what people can do if, you know, they so choose. I'm just wondering, Lori or any of you guys have heard, so I know from time to time, there will be towns that go in on, you know, action-type letters or, you know, things of that nature that, you know, we, as a voice, we could do as a district or we could also go in collectively and, you know, ask for, "We need a deadline for..." You know, we've been operating, you know, this district has been operating, you know, with decreasing state aid for 25 years, as Matt just said, if I remember that number correctly. We will continue to do that, but it would be nice at some point to know when we could expect a little bit more.
So, we did send a letter in the spring to the governor and the legislature as a board. But we could send another letter saying, "Now that this ruling has come down from the state Supreme Court, we ask that you respect the checks and balances of our state constitution and set a deadline for honoring the ruling."
Maybe we should also send a letter to our representatives here in Merrimack that make sure they understand the direct impact this has on our town and on our property taxpayers and as a board, formally ask them to align their votes with proper funding.
I will draft those and bring them to you. Any other comments before we move on?
Great conversation. Thank you very much.
Great. August 2025 Leadership Retreat Discussion.
We are having our annual August Retreat on August 7th and 8th this year, two full days. This is a time where we begin to ramp up for the upcoming school year. We have lots of interesting topics we'll be discussing this year. We have a consultant working with us, Kelly Driscoll, who will be providing about a two-and-a-half-hour session with our leadership team on day one with the goals of, and I'm going to read from our proposal reconnecting leaders with their core values, as a steadying force in decision-making, communication, and team culture, building confidence and clarity, how to have and hold hard conversations and navigate complex relational dynamics, how to regulate stress, which is, I will tell you, is increasing. You can see it in everyone's eyes and expressions and faces towards the end of the year, protect boundaries and show up with a strong presence under high-pressure conditions, and create space for human connections through shared reflection and community. And so, we're looking forward to those discussions. We're going to talk about, we're going to have sort of a refresher on our school safety, evacuation, and reunification procedures. Matt and I have been meeting on that. We'll talk with some of the leadership team members and a couple of little tweaks to the process and procedures. We're having some graphical information printed up right now for every classroom with the various terms of hold, secure, lockdown, et cetera, so that a staff member, whether it's permanent staff or a substitute, a day-to-day substitute, can look at that chart and see what they're supposed to do immediately. We're going to, we're going to review, I've got a lot of documentation on the review of the entire bullying investigation process, the nature of the investigation, the law itself, the appeals process, the timelines that are associated with bullying, whether it be with the investigation, notification of parents, notification of students, the time for an appeal by a parent from the principal to the superintendent, from the superintendent to the school board, or the school board to the Department of Education. So, there's lots and lots of information that we're going to talk about there. We're going to talk about the Administrative Individual Professional Development Plan process with three goals over a multi-year period, three-year period in general, focusing on student achievement, focusing on personal growth, and a district goal, which I'm hoping will come from one of our goals, the school board goals, and we would have that as a leadership team goal. Let's see, we'll review, I've asked Jason Palitia to prepare something for, almost like a guide on AI, what we see in terms of student use, staff use, administrative use, a little bit more comprehensive than, this is what AI can do in short, discreet sessions, a little bit broader overview of the application of artificial intelligence to the profession of education and its impact. We're going to be talking about the new cell phone policy and how that will impact the content of the student handbooks also, and some of the pitfalls, some of the challenges that we'll be focusing and how we're going to deal with those challenges because we know that they're going to come not only in Merrimack but in every other district. Let's see if I'm missing something. We're also going to have, we're going to talk about the communications plan, we're going to, I'm going to put together an RFP with Matt shortly, as you have discussed, we've discussed. We're going to talk about the budget timeline, we'll talk about special education and how we proceed forward if we still, at that point in time, do not have a special education director. And let's see, I think that's it. Actually, we're going to have Kalise Warnum rejoin us after my discussion with the Commissioner of Education with the leadership team. Kalise is not, just so that, you know, I provide clarity to the public, this is not a presentation on DEI, this is not a presentation on, I just lost the term, COT, Critical Race Theory, I'm sorry, thank you. We're talking about, Kalise works with our leadership team on strategies for dealing with children's very sometimes concerning comments to others and bullying. And so, it's not diversity, equity, inclusion, it's not critical race theory, it's strategies for, how do we have those conversations with students to reduce the acrimony that seems to be increasing between them and the very, very inappropriate comments that students are making, some that would be quite shocking to you in terms of what happens with some of these comments from students. So, we're going to make it as instructive and as learning-oriented and as action-packed as possible. And it'll be not only a time for learning, but a time for us to congeal as a leadership team and move- and move forward with the respect, with the confidence, with the collaboration that we have been building for several years now.
Comments or questions from the board? I just want to add that I'm doing a professional development this summer with Londonderry High School on school AI and Magic School and appropriate use of AI, ethical use of AI for students, how to incorporate in teaching that to them and things like that, but also ways for teachers to use it in, in great ways to enhance educational methodologies and engagement in the classroom and those kinds of things. So I wasn't taking any courses this summer, and then I, I didn't realize when I signed up for an August session that it signed me up for the whole summer. So I have weekly assignments for this PD. And yes, that's what teachers do is unpaid PD over the summer. But it's been, it's been really interesting. So I'm glad that you're, you're doing that as part of your August retreat.
Looking forward to it.
All right. So the cellphone policy, and, and I just want to state for the public, the law has been changed that cellphones are banned, as the governor said, from bell to bell. So I'm going to read what the law says, and then Bill's going to tell us where he is in this update, and then we'll have a discussion. But the new law states, "School boards shall develop and adopt a policy governing student cellphone use in schools. Such policy shall prohibit personal device use by students during the school day and be implemented school-wide with approved exceptions determined by student medical disability or language proficiency need. Such policy shall be developed in collaboration with any applicable local educator associations and school district parents and shall be reviewed and updated annually. School district policies shall not prohibit students with disabilities from using a device to support their learning as identified by their individualized education program plan developed under Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, 29 U.S.C., Section 794, or when required to support emergent multilingual students with appropriate language access programs and services pursuant to Title IV of the Civil Rights Act of 1964." So I have a question before you tell us where you are. So the first sentence says cellphones, and the second sentence says personal device use. And Matt was the first one to catch that. What does our lawyer say about this? Does it also prohibit BYOD, i- smartwatch, iPad, AirPods, Beats headphones, Kindle, or is it just cellphones?
That conversation is being had with our legal counsel at the present time, because we wanted to make sure that we got it right, not only for the policy purposes, but for handbook purposes. You know, there are some districts that interpret it as all personal devices. There are others that interpret it as just cellphones. So that's why I sought clarification from our legal counsel. The reason I sought clarification also and asked for a, working with me on the draft is because of what you just mentioned, Lori. The, there was an additional paragraph that was added to the additional piece of legis-, the original, excuse me, piece of legislation that addressed the fact that a superintendent or designee has a discretion to allow certain device usage by students with disabilities or language barriers. So we're going to kind of flush that out also in terms of what really constitutes in our regulations, what constitutes a legitimate need for the use of cellphone or cellular-based technology. So I don't mean to be, I won't say evasive, but uncertain at this time, but we're just trying to make sure that in our conversations with legal counsel, we get the right opinion in terms of, is it all devices or it's just, is it just limited to cellphones? And as you remember, as Matt said, does that mean if a student looks at, looks at their Apple Watch, that they're violating the policy? And that's what we're looking to flush out.
So this is our opportunity to give Bill input into the kinds of things that we are thinking, our opinions, thoughts on implementation, enforcement, et cetera, as this policy is being drafted. Because as you know, school, first day of school is knocking down our door, and we've got to have a policy fairly quickly and the handbook's updated. Lori?
So number one, I know State Rep. Bill Boyd reached out to me on his vote on this policy. So I, I'd like to know what their intent was, what was the actual intent of the law? Because, you know, like cellphone policy, personal device, of course, there are going to be the exceptions to the rule. There always are. You know, somebody who's a diabetic, they get, they get their emergencies on their cellphone. So we're going, there's a lot that's going to have to be flushed out, like, you know, how do we know in their IEP or are they, how they're going to be identified? Because they're going to have to be able to sometimes use the cellphone. And one of the things that I talked to Lori about is, do we have enough people at Merrimack High School and the middle school, but, you know, this is a big change for, for our students. We have students who are going to be seniors in high school, and they use their cellphone in their face, you know, 24/7. And so, you know, we're, we're, how are, how is the administration going to handle this? Because teachers are going to ask for, all right, you have to give me your cellphone. And then the student who could give the cellphone, or they might say, I'm not giving you my cellphone. So now we have insubordination, and we're going to have, we have three, we have a principal and two assistant principals. Who's going to handle? And do we need to look at, like, adding, taking away a pair of professionals and adding a security person who can run interference? Because it's always before the cementerize. That's like a really big saying, like, before the cementerize. So come the first day of school, this has to be before the cementerize. Because once cementerized, you're not going to change, you're not going to change it. So we have a window of opportunity to make this change. And so I just want to make sure we have all the resources, because I, I personally think it's a good policy. You know, I think that cellphones can be a real distraction. And where we've gone one-to-one in devices, we don't have to use cellphones to, you know, look up information anymore. So, so that's where I'm at.
Jenna?
Well, and my, my thinking is, I pretty much agree with everything you're saying. And what I'm saying, you're, you're saying that the student might refuse to turn over the cellphone, but they might, and in refusing, they might say, my parent said this belongs to me, they pay for it, I'm not required to turn it over. And then what happens? And when you're saying, I, I absolutely foresee what you're saying, having more sort of security and/or some sort of support there, but guess what that becomes? Another unfunded mandate, something we have to put in place and pay for, because a law has been made. And like I said, I agree with it. I have to say, I'm pretty thrilled that I have this weird gap in children. Like, all my other kids, big kids are out of high school, but my, one kid's going into seventh grade, right? She'll grow up in a cellphone-free school environment, and I think that that is very positive. But there are other people who have a junior in high school who are going to really find this very difficult, because they've been able to text their child during the middle of the school day. Listen, I've been guilty of that too, right? So I really do think that we have to carefully carve out, you know, you sent us a few different examples of what, you know, I thought Londonderry was very broad and e- seemed, but I think there's also kids who read on their Kindles, like, that are avid readers, and they read on their Kindles. Can they bring their Kindle? Is, I mean, I can see why that would absolutely count and possibly be problematic, but at the same time, we're banning them from the thing they read on? That's a hard decision. So I think the legal, yeah, and my, and I read on the Kindle app on my phone, so I'm in that camp, in that camp, so.
Well, and I said to Bill, along with what you're saying, Jenna, that using Londonderry as an example, and I, I think I've told most of you this, when the, the policy changed mid-year, speaking of the cement drying, there's a big news story about it too. And they changed it in the middle of the year. What made it work was 100% enforcement and consequences. And the consequences were, if you, on day one, you were caught with your cellphone after the bell rang, it went into a pocket holder thing at the, in the classroom, and you served a detention that day. And it didn't matter if you had sports, or job, or bus, or ride, and there were like 200 students on the first day in detention. I mean, and that whole week, I would listen to the students talk. This one, one of the gals in my classes talked about getting three detentions in one day, because she just could not put her cellphone away. She kept, she kept getting it out. And she, I mean, she wasn't mad about it. She was laughing about how she wasn't, she realized she wasn't following the policy. After that first week of 100% enforcement and lots of detentions, it, it, it just dropped off. The, the, the students stopped getting them out. They really obeyed and followed. As soon as the bell rang, they put their phones in their backpack. I rear-, the, in fact, I didn't have to, I did not have to give a detention in any of my classes until the last week of classes, regular classes, after that. But it took all the staff and faculty to 100% enforce it. You can't, and now it's a law. So you can't be a teacher and go like, I don't want to police that, so I'm not going to police it in my class, because it makes it hard for all the other teachers who are having to enforce it. It's now a law, you have to enforce it as, as an instructor. The part, though, that you talked, both talked about is what if a student refuses? And that actually happened to me at a previous school where it, it turned into a physical altercation, because the student was so addicted to the phone that they could not turn it over, and I had to get the security person involved. So in our procedures, we have to address that situation. We have to address parents, same thing. What if they don't, well, my parents can, said that I can have it. Okay, well, now that's an assistant principal calling the parent and addressing it with the parent, those kinds of things. So all of those have to be taken care of in all of this, but it is going to come down to the procedure for enforcement and consequences. Rachel, then Jenna, then Lori.
So as we think through this, I do, I know there's been a lot of discussion on the secondary education, but children are getting cellphones now, very young, and I don't know how much it is in our elementary schools, but I'm pretty sure it's in our elementary schools. So what does that look like from all aspects? And just the part, because I know there's always the other side of the coin when parents are like, my, my children need to have the cellphone because of all of these incidents that now happen, right? For safety purposes and, which is completely 100% understandable, that it is like the safety net to your, your, your line to your child, right? So I think maybe we can consider too, when we talk about, you know, safety and evaluation procedures of, you know, what does it look like, you know, communication plans out to families to ensure that we will be prompt with those communications? But also on the flip side, if these, if a terrible situation ever happened, training is you're not to use yourself, right? So that needs to come across as well, because that takes away time, that could take away listening, that could take away visuals of what we are supposed to be doing with our children to keep them safe versus, you know, trying to get ahold of, of families. So I think that that's another important piece of this is not necessarily in, you know, the, the policy that, or the procedures that you're writing, but as a secondary thought to this.
I will add, and I've, I've looked at our emergency operation plan, and then Matt's worked on it, everything like that. A couple of things, I do think we need to consistently be communicating that, with parents. If there is an incident, it will go out through Power School, it will go out as soon as humanly possible. But the other thing that in other schools, they train the students on is, and, and this came up in the evacuation and reunification training, as soon as authorities are alerted, the first thing they're going to do is shut down communication. So your cellphone's not going to work anyway, because they're going to be communicating with radios, that's why we have them in our schools, because they're going to shut down cellphone communication. So parents need to understand that if something happens, their kid's not going to be able to use their cellphone anyway. So we're not doing it so strict that they can't have it on campus, so it'll be with them. But you're right, if there is a run or hide situation, they're not going to be taking it with them. They're not going to be able to. And those are part of our drills and practices in communicating with the students. Absolutely, we need to do that. Jenna?
So two things. I was going to say one other thing, so I'll say my less popular thing second. But to what you just said, that they'll be communicating with radios in our schools, I would like to check back with the fire department, because the last I heard, their radio systems have not been updated and do not work in our buildings.
In some schools, I know we had a problem at the, at the middle school, okay?
At the middle school, yeah. We've been having that conversation for a while now. And that is something that we can talk about at some point in time.
Yeah, and, and I, that's what I'm concerned about. We've been having this conversation for a while now, and I'm not blaming us necessarily. I think it's, that's a town budget thing. But I've repeatedly heard staff members who have children in our schools that are on the fire department saying, ah, this is kind of a big deal. And I would go ahead and agree with that.
But my understanding, tell, correct me if I'm wrong, because I could be totally wrong. I don't think we have a problem with our police communication. It's just the fire department.
I'm not sure about that.
From what I hear, the complaint came from the fire department initially.
Union, the fire department, the union is very vocal about it.
Bidirectional antenna systems in the, the middle school. Talk a hundred grand. We don't have that money.
No, we don't. And it's not, we don't provide the, the radios for the fire department either. So it's not our responsibility. However, it is our problem if it becomes an issue.
We have been talking about this for, for quite some time, and then there was a lapse of communication as far as us with them and them with us. And it was something we wanted to clear up a while back, but things got delayed, so to speak.
Well, and I would like to know if it actually also is an impact with the police department. I don't know that it is. We have school resource officers. I'm, I'm assuming they would know pretty easily, but.
They use the same radios. They may not use the same frequency.
This is what I'm concerned about. So there's that. And my, my less popular thing is, I think that we also have to ask ourselves with a cellphone ban, what do we do about teachers? Teachers bring their cellphones to school. They often text their children during the day or their, you know, maybe they're reading on their Kindle while they're in a study hall. I don't know the answer to this question, and this is obviously a conversation that's going to involve the MTA. But I'm just going to say, listen, I'm a teacher. I use my cellphone during the day. This is going to be difficult for all of us, but it is very hypocritical to say, everyone, put away your phones.
Except, I will say this, let me, because there's a lot of discussion on this on social media. We're adults. We're, we have privileges children do not have.
That is true. Yes.
I can go out on my lunch hour and go get food on a closed campus. I can drink coffee. I don't, but I could. There are privileges reserved for adults because we're adults, and part of that privilege is, guess what? The principal needs to be able to text the teacher, or the secretary needs to be able to text the designated sub, or those kinds of things. Communication for, hey, there's about a drill happening in the next class period, go out via text. So there is a legitimate reason why teachers should have their phones, but the flip side of that is professionalism should be that they don't have their phones out during instruction.
Certainly, yeah. I think we just have to delineate it very clearly for teachers as well, is, I guess what I'm saying. I'm not saying, let's all take, put our, you know, you know, I know, I, I'm a teacher. I work in a school building. I, you know, understand completely.
I don't, yeah, and I don't have mine out during instruction, but.
How do we do that? And, you know, what is instruction? If kids are sitting and working, can you be at your desk and using your cellphone for something that isn't a text from the principal or whatever? Can you be on your phone? Can you, I think we, there is going to be need, I'm foreseeing that that will come up, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Rachel?
Thanks. And I know I just brought up our elementary students, but hearing the conversation with teachers and you bringing up the adults, that I don't know if there's some gray area of where we have students who are going to be 18 or in, still in school, how is that applicable as well? I don't know if.
They're still students by the law.
They are, but I don't know if that was, you know, if there'd be some kind of gray area.
We're graduated adults. We are graduated, out-of-school adults in chart, in a position of authority.
I will say, you know how things work, and I feel like, like you said, whilst cement is still wet, it's just, I think, good to think through these things.
But they also can't call themselves in either, I don't think, right? Their parent still has to do that. So there are, there are weird, it is very weird to be the parent of an 18-year-old who's in school, because they, there are certain things that can't be done even.
And yet they have to sign the FERPA release. Lori?
I just have, just to keep adding on to this, I think it's going to be really important that the school board also pushes out communication on this. It can't just be the administration. Like, this is going to be a new policy, here's the new policy. It's going to be the administrator's job to come up with what those procedures are. I would say, going back to, Londonderry did it, and BG also did it in the spring. Some of the things, some of the things that they did was, you know, on the second time, your parent had to come and get the cellphone. And that, that also was, you know, something new to have the parents have to come and, and revive this, you know, get the cellphone. Again, with the student handbooks, having all the student handbooks. Again, with the student handbooks, having all the student handbooks printed and given out to, you know, to the freshmen and, and have parents read, you know, these are the discipline procedures. This is what's going to happen. And again, if you refuse, that's different than if you have the cellphone. Because now you've, you've upped your discipline from having a cellphone to insubordination, which can clearly be a huge behavioral issue for a teacher and, and for anyone. Okay.
And, and I agree with you. We have, we have to be communicating it. And also I just want to say this, this is the hard part. Parents, if you tell your students to break the law, think about what, what the unintended consequences of that is. There are lots of laws that seem kind of ridiculous. For example, in a lot of towns, a road like Continental would have a higher speed limit than 35. Frankly, it would still be safe at 45. But my job as a parent is to tell my kid, drive 35. There are a lot of laws that we think are trivial or an inconvenience. But if we teach our students to break one law, drive 10 over everywhere you go, do you take your cellphone anyway? And, and I don't care what they have to say. Think about where you're communicating to your students because we're trying to educate well-rounded future citizens of our country. Rachel?
I agree with that. I was going to go back to Lori and the communication plan of this. So I know our handbooks are quite large and I don't know that everybody sits down and reads them. So I would just request that maybe we have a few quick visuals. There's a lot of programs out there that we can use to make these visuals and make it just a little bit more digestible and hopefully get out there quicker.
And I think we need something on each school's website, right on the, the front page about it. Once, once it's here, no cellphones loud, click here for the policy. Anything else? All right. Any other new business? We are going to hold on all four policies. We're going to go ahead and have the policy committee meet. And so if you have questions, thoughts, or changes, edits, will you send those to Sandy and myself and Naomi? And we're going to meet before our August meeting to go over those policies again. So we're going to hold on all four of those. Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the June 2nd, 2025 public minutes?
I move to accept those minutes.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? 500. Motion for the June 16th minutes.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Moved by Jenna, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Lori. Any discussion?
I do have a question.
Yes.
So I know I was not here. I did watch the meeting. Do you prefer, I don't mind abstaining or do you have a preference?
If you watched the meeting and read the minutes, you can, if you feel comfortable, you can vote.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor? 500. Consent agenda. That would be Kathleen.
Good evening again. I want to let you know that we have two teacher resignations. One Kelly Ciepetta, who's a classroom teacher at Reed's Ferry Elementary School, and another Keith Tanner, classroom teacher at James Mastercola Upper Elementary School. On the flip side, we have several positions for teacher nominations. We have Jennifer Gagnon, who's classroom teacher, James Mastercola Upper Elementary School. Melissa Zupkowski, classroom teacher for James Mastercola Upper Elementary School. Emma Afriati, special education teacher at James Mastercola Upper Elementary School. Ash Julia Saladino, a one-year special education teacher for James Mastercola Upper Elementary School. Michelle Lobby, science teacher at Merrimack High School. Ryan Ziegler, technology education teacher, also at Merrimack High School. Mandy Tran, classroom teacher at Reed's Fel- Reed's Ferry Elementary School. Erica Feinstermacher, classroom teacher at Reed's Ferry Elementary School. And Austin Fox, classroom teacher Reed's Ferry Elementary School. So several candidates here for teacher nominations.
Do you have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I make motion to accept the consent agenda.
Do I have second? Seconded by Rachel. All those in favor? 500. Thank you.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
So, you know, again, just very excited when you read these resumes and you look at the quality of people that we're bringing in to Merrimack. It's, it's really exciting. And we also have a few brand new teachers and I think that's really awesome. We have three brand new teachers and one fairly young teacher and then a lot of experience coming in. So I, you know, I spent a lot of time looking at these resumes and I'm really, really happy with the quality of people we're bringing in.
And I think it's important to say that part of that is because the people in this town supported the MTA contract. And, and that, and that is, this is why that's important.
Rachel?
Thanks. And I'll just touch on the resignations. Well, I did not know Kelly. I'm sure she will be greatly missed. But for Mr. Keith Tanner, my son had him and he was just a phenomenal teacher, a, such a kind and compassionate human being. So he will be greatly missed from our upper elementary.
Committee reports. Do we have any committee reports since our last meeting? Summertime is pretty quiet. Correspondents?
I did have one correspondence. I didn't get back to the person yet. They just called. It was someone from, a former teacher from Pingerton Academy reaching out about a Woods teacher from Merrimack High School. So I will send that on to, to administration.
I think all my correspondents, you all were initially CC'd on and, and one apparent concern, one apparent who wanted to meet with the board regarding an upcoming meeting with a parent that we were aware of. Those, those were all pretty much it. And then I had, we, we did have one other one from a involved community member just giving us information that he's passionate about. Comments from the board? Lori?
So on July 4th weekend, after the parade, I was able to go to my friend Sue Sheridan at Cape Cod. And there was a number of Merrimack recent graduates who just finished their freshman year in college. And they grew, they were from Dartmouth, UNH, UPenn were, were the ones that I got the, where, where, where did you go to school? And the number one question I ask every single one of them, were you prepared when you went to college? And every single one of them said, I was so prepared. I really felt good in college. And that's the evidence that we, we, you know, we get the survey five months from now or whatever. But these kids said that they felt that the Merrimack School District and Merrimack High School really prepared them. And they all went to really good colleges. So I thought that was just really good information for us to have.
I actually think it's really funny that you just brought that up because my son got married over the July 4th weekend and all of his friends came in from like Kentucky, West Virginia, all of those places here. And we got on the topic of education and one of the things they were saying is college was very hard because, you know, whatever. And, and my son said, listen, I hated school. And he did, he hated it. But I didn't think, when I got to college, I felt like I was prepared. So I, I thought that was, and it was very, the conversation was very interesting to hear a kid who just really didn't like it, but realized that he was so well-prepared when he got there. It was, it was, it made me feel really proud of this district, actually.
And just think how it's going to be now that all this new curriculum, like if they're saying it now, wait, it's, they're going to be, they're going to all be graduating top of their classes.
Well, I was just discussing this with my son last night. He was like, you know, how, how are you going to police AI or whatever? And I said, students are literally, literally learning to write five paragraph essays in the fourth grade by hand in wit and wisdom, learning the root words, the, the Latin root and the Greek word root, and they're doing research. So by the time they get old enough to use AI, they won't need it because they're learning those skills so much earlier.
My daughter, I, you just mentioned wit, wit and wisdom. My daughter went to a theater camp today and they were talking about something related to theater, deep in theater. And she said, and they showed a video, but I had already seen it because it was part of my wit and wisdom. So I was like, hey, look at that. Any other comments from the board?
All right. Well, then I will open up the floor for public comment on agenda items. This is the time when the public can speak on agenda items. If you would like to speak, you just state your name and address. And if you're a student, you never have to state your address. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Jenna. Seconded by Naomi. All those in favor? 500. Thank you and good night.